For our resolution number six dash twenty twenty five to set the realty tax collector bond at thirty percent of the tax duplicate for the year twenty twenty four.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, the motion carries. For resolution number seven dash twenty twenty five, our municipal authority member.
I make a motion to appoint Darlene Barney to the municipal authority board.
I'll second that. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. For our resolution number eight dash twenty twenty five, the zoning hearing board members, the vacancy of a three-year term to expire on January first, twenty twenty eight.
I'm.
As Kara Sheardon.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? I didn't hear.
She said no.
Okay, four to one, Carol. Uh, for resolution number nine dash twenty twenty five, for our zoning hearing board, first alternate for vacancy of a three-year term to expire on January first, twenty twenty eight, is Joe Flaherty.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 The motion carries. For resolution number ten dash twenty twenty five, our CPA accounting firm, is Jose Beck, Musial and Wood, uh, for a three-year, uh, this is the year three of a three-year contract.
So moved.
It's been moved.
Second.
And seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 The motion, the motion carries. For resolution number eleven dash twenty twenty five, for our chief administrative officer of pensions, is Don Januso.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 The motion carries. For resolution number twelve dash twenty twenty five, for the non-uniform pension fund at three percent of the gross salary towards the non-uniform pension fund, which is the same as twenty twenty four.
So moved.
It's been moved.
Second.
And seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 The motion carries. For our resolution number thirteen dash twenty twenty five, the police pension plan, uh, at five percent of their gross salary toward the police pension plan, again, it's the same as twenty twenty four.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 The motion carries. For resolution number fourteen dash twenty twenty five, for vacancy board member.
I make a motion for Ed Pover.
It's been moved. Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Did I hear everybody?
Mm-hmm.
Darlene?
Aye.
Okay. The motion carries. For resolution number fifteen dash twenty twenty five, establish the dates for the board of supervisors' monthly meeting as the first Monday of the month at seven P M.
I made the motion for Barbara Hamilton to be on the vacancy board member.
I'm sorry, Darlene, please say it again.
She made a motion for Barb Hamilton on vacancy board. She already voted on that, for Ed Pover. That's passed, yeah.
You said something, Tom?
I'm sorry, uh, Darlene, I, there was a motion and a second and we voted on it. There's a motion and a second and I called for a vote.
Okay.
And I thought you said yes.
She did say yes.
No, I, I says I make a motion for Barb Hamilton to remain on the vacancy board.
Well, if we have, there's a motion on the floor, I have to, I have to process that one first before I move it to, to uh, either amended motion or a second motion, so I called for a vote. I mean, if you, we registered you as a yes vote, but if you say your vote was no for, um, Ed Pover, let me know right now.
Okay, no.
Okay, so four one, the motion carries. For resolution number fifteen dash twenty twenty five, it's to establish, we did that already, right?
Yeah, we did that one.
Yep.
Do we vote on it?
No.
No.
Yeah, is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved and.
Second.
Seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 The motion carries. For resolution number sixteen dash twenty twenty five, the pay period every other Thursday for all full-time employees, the benefits will remain the same as in twenty twenty four, except where they're amended by contracts. Administrative employees will contribute one point five percent of gross pay towards their healthcare plan. Is there a motion to approve this pay period and resolution?
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 The motion carries. For resolution number seventeen dash twenty twenty five, to certify delegates to the state Association's convention, uh, does anybody have an interest in going or availability?
I plan to go this year. Don, are you gonna go too? Make him the delegate, but I'll just attend as a, a regular.
The delegates will be Cindy Fisher and, uh, Don Januso. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
It's been moved. I'll second that. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 The motion carries. For resolution number eighteen dash twenty twenty five, to name the voting delegate at the state convention. It can only be one from the.
Make it Don, just in case.
Okay, the motion for Don Januso, I'll second that. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 The motion carries. If there can be no further business for this reorganization meeting, I'll declare this meeting closed.
I, Jack, I think that we as the public should have, um, some input for what just happened here. And I'd like to say something, if I may.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're gonna go into the meeting shortly.
Okay. Anyway, it's not about a shorter meeting.
I said we're going into it shortly.
So, I'm here to request a sep- a, a separate jobs postings for all the positions that you guys just filled. We couldn't hear half of the names. You guys ran through them and more than a twenty-four hour, uh, before our meetings happened that we even know which positions are open. Uh, we still are not sure who filled some of the positions. So I'm requesting more time be allowed for the citizens to address concerns. By, by you combining these two meetings tonight, whether it was weather-related or not, it shortens us to have the ability to, to, to give feedback. Um, it makes, it seems like you guys are just rubber stamping everybody in, and I'm not okay with it. This is our local government and we, the people, should have some input. I argue the board stop allowing one person to serve on multiple, um, boards. Uh, we have Cecil Township, we have fourteen thousand eight hundred and fifty-seven citizens. Why are the Barneys the only ones fit to serve and serving on three boards now? Last meeting, you kind of rubber stamped her husband right up in that spot. Government structures are designed to have checks and balances between different boards and authorities. So when one person holds a position that interconnects boards, it reduces the independence of those checks and partic- particularly weakens our oversight and accountability for us as citizens to you, our elected officials. The board of supervisors has final authority over zoning changes, approvals, conditional use. While the zoning board handles zoning appeals and variances, municipal, the municipality authority does decisions for budgets. It's screaming in priorities. When a husband and wife can hold multiple positions, it has to raise concerns. It does for me. What about our Sunshine Act? They said that having private discussions about township business is kind of what it's there to present, prevent. The act is, um, designed to prevent back channels and decision makings. A married couple holding positions on multiple boards has to raise questions, whether the discussions are happening or not. The Pennsylvania Sunshine Act ensures transparency over government by requiring officials, actions deliberations by public agencies to be, to be conducted on open meetings where the public can attend, participate and observe. I don't feel like that's happened tonight. The act prohibits a quorum of a board from discussing official matters in private. While them as husband and wife don't make quorum themselves, they could be talking to each other. They could be influencing decisions across these respective boards.
AC, come on, wind it down, please.
I'm almost done. It could seem, it seems untrustworthy that these transparency requirements aren't being met. Even if no violations are occurring between them, it has to cause some red flags with you guys. Cause it does with us citizens. By allowing these appointments, you're opening us up to legal challenges, penalties, damages, not to mention how the taxpayers of Cecil Township looks upon how we are governed.
AC, okay.
Overlapping her position.
Okay, well, you raised your questions. Thank you very much. We're gonna move into our, our business meeting. I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Would you please join us in a slow to our nation's flag, please?
We're the taxpayers, Tom. See, this just proves it.
Come on, I'm gonna start it. Our, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
In the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and justice for all.
Please let the record show that supervisors Cassiola, Agizio, Fisher, Barney and Shifani are in attendance. In addition to Don Januso, our township manager, Jack King, our assistant township manager and director of planning, Sean Bukavinski, our chief of police, Joe Hurson, our director of public works, uh, fire chief Ted Wolford, Dan Miller of Southbridge G M S, engineer Dan Dizeroth of Gateway Engineers, and solicitor Gretchen Moore. So if, if there's any residents want to make a comment on some item you see on the agenda, please feel free to do it tonight or now, but we want you to, please stand up so either to come to the microphone so everybody can hear you and give us your name and address for the record, please. Anybody have any comments on agenda items?
Agenda items, oh.
Yes. All right, I'm gonna just go to, uh, announcements. Um, the ladies auxiliary is sponsoring a family bingo at the Cecil Volunteer Fire Department number three in Miller's Run Road here on Sunday, January twelfth. Um, doors open eleven A M., bingo starts at eleven forty-five. Uh, there will not be a historical society meeting in January. That's it. Uh, first of all, our professional staff report. Don, you have something for us? Uh, Ray, Sean, please report.
So tonight, this is gonna be a surprise and, uh, I don't get the chance to do many police reports like this and it's gonna be a special one and this person is absolutely going to be surprised. Um, so today, we are gonna recognize a very important employee for twenty-five years of service. And this twenty-five years of service is presented to Carol Farkas, our police administrative assistant. So everybody can agree in appreciation for twenty-five years of service, loyalty and the stewardage to honor in service. Carol? And thank everybody for keeping it a secret. Carol, congratulations. I think she deserved a speech. You won a speech. Thank you, Carol. You deserve it. Thank you. Thank you.
Now, I got, I have something to say too about Carol. Twenty-six years ago, Carol worked for me. But I didn't have full-time work for her, so she worked for me a few days a week in my business. She was way, way beyond what, um, I needed a secretary for. Well, at that time, twenty-six years ago, it was the first time we budgeted money in our workshop or, or, or budget for a police secretary administrative assistant. Our former chief had asked for years, but we never had the money to, uh, to, uh, hire somebody and to fund it. So that year, I went to that police chief and I said, look, I says, my, my board budgeted money for a secretary for you this year. And, um, he was just, he said, he couldn't have been happier. Then I said, and I have the perfect person for you. His body just shrunk down like this. He just shrunk away. He just thought, oh, don't tell me it's gonna be a political, uh, somebody for a political appointment or something like that, cause I guess he had high hopes for picking a good secretary. So from that point on, once he got to know Carol, with Carol working for him, uh, I used to threaten him anytime I felt like it, saying that we're gonna pull her out of his department and move her into the administration and we're gonna find somebody else for you. And, uh, I always got my way with him when I made that threat. So Carol, again, we're, we're so glad to have you.
She does. No one works harder than Carol, that's for sure.
Yeah, we, we can't go on without you, Carol. All right, for resolution number nineteen dash twenty twenty five, it's to consider the application, uh, twenty twenty four zero zero two nine for the Alto Piano's Phase Six Revised Lot five twenty-eight and six oh one to six oh four. The applicant is, uh, Graziani Homes in, uh, Alto Piano. Dan?
Yeah, this, uh, subdivision, I, I had to color it up so everybody could, uh, fully see what's going on. Uh, this lot here that's outlined in yellow is owned by the Graziani family. Essentially what they're doing is they're splitting this up and they're going to, I'm not sure the, I'm sure they're selling it or giving it to people. I'm sure they're selling it, uh, to, to all three of these other lots. So here in green is one lot, they're getting the piece, as you can see here, that I have with a green tick mark. Uh, the orange lot is getting this piece and the red lot is getting this piece. So we had four lots, we're ending up with three. Uh, they've addressed all the comments and, um, the plan's ready for your consideration.
This is a simple subdivision, basically.
Yeah, just a lot line revision.
All right, is there a motion to approve resolution nineteen dash twenty twenty five?
So moved.
It's been moved.
Second.
And seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 The motion carries. For item number twenty twenty five, twenty 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 five, it's to consider application number twenty twenty four zero zero three one for the Lanks consolidation plan. Uh, the applicant is, um, Marcy Lanks on Johnson, Johns Road in McDonald. Dan?
Yeah, this is on, uh, located on John Avenue. Um, and really, this is even simpler than the last one. This is two lots owned by the same person. Uh, they're actually combining these together to make one lot, uh, which I understand they're gonna build a new home on. And that's it.
All right, is there a motion to, uh, approve twenty 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 five?
So moved.
It's been moved.
Second.
And seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Darlene, can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay.
Aye.
Okay, the motion carries. For twenty-one dash twenty twenty five, consider application for payment number six and a final for the work on Profio Road, McConnell Road, Klinger Road, Morgan Road, North DePauli Road and Oliver Street, completed to date for the twenty twenty four pavement maintenance contract A in amount of thirty-five thousand eight hundred and eleven dollars and thirty-six cents to independent enterprises.
Can we make this recommendation? Uh, they've provided the maintenance, required maintenance bond and it's already, all the paperwork's together on this one.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
It's moved. I'll second that motion. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Abstained.
Carol passes four to zero to one, extension. Uh, for item twenty twenty.
Talk a little bit louder, end it up, Michael, please.
All right, I'm, I don't wanna blast everybody else out of the room though, Darlene, I'm sorry. Uh, item number twenty-two twenty twenty five, it's to consider application for payment number four and a final for the work on Profio Road, McConnell Road, Klinger Road, Morgan Road, North DePauli Road and Oliver Street, completed to date for the twenty twenty four, um, pavement maintenance contract C in the amount of four million, I'm sorry, four thousand five hundred and eighty-eight dollars and ninety-four cents to the parking lot painting.
Yeah, this is sort of the, uh, annual, uh, line striping pavement parking contract and, uh, it's ready to be funneled out. We would make this recommendation.
So moved.
It's been moved. Yeah, I'll second that. Those in favor signify by saying, yes.
Um, hold on one second. I thought we, on North DePauli, I thought we were gonna be doing some line striping around the, uh, the restaurant there on the corner.
We're, I, we're still, that's still in the works, Bill. They're, they're not gonna paint now too, since it's a bit cold like this. Like, we're still, it's still in the works.
Good touch.
Um, do we, would vote on it?
I forgot about that, right?
It's been moved and seconded. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 The motion carries. For item twenty-three dash twenty twenty five, it's to consider change order number one to the public, Cecil Township Public Works facility in the plumbing contract to First American Industries in amount of two thousand seven hundred and sixty-four dollars and fifty-eight cents for additional piping to, service to the lift, or the vehicle lift.
Yeah, this is the, uh, this is the change order related to, um, after the vehicle lift was selected. Uh, it actually had a pneumatic component. Uh, they needed to bring air from another location in the building over to the, uh, uh, to the facility. We've reviewed the, uh, the request in the, uh, uh, presented, uh, by First American and we would recommend, uh, this change order be approved.
So it's really a cost associated with the lift, I mean, based upon the lift selected.
Um, I wasn't involved in the lift selection. I just know that we need this at the, at the end of the day.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 The motion carries. For item number twenty-four dash twenty twenty five, it's to consider application for payment number ten for the work completed on the Cecil Township Public Works facility in the fire protection system in the amount of nine hundred and fifty dollars to Alliance Fire Systems, Inc.
Yeah, this is just a partial payment. Uh, we'd recommend this payment as, uh, listed.
How close are they to being complete?
Very complete. Very, very close. We're just, I think we're just holding retainage at this point.
Oh, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
It's been moved.
Second.
And seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 The motion carries. Uh, for resolution twenty-five dash twenty twenty five, it's to consider application for payment number ten R. and a final for the work completed to date on the public works facility in the fire protection system in the amount of twelve thousand five hundred dollars to Alliance Fire Systems.
Yeah, so now they're complete with the second one. We're paying their retainage, so the project is complete.
All right. We got, we got it. Is there a motion to approve that motion?
So, so moved.
Or the, I mean, that item. It's been moved. I'll, I'll second that. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 The motion carries. For number twenty-six dash, or twenty-six dash twenty twenty five, consider the full release of the financial security posted for the private improvements for the Valley Tire Company land development, a total reduction of six hundred and twenty-four thousand and seventy-five dollars upon satisfaction of any other payments due to township. Recommended by the township engineer.
Yeah, this is, uh, we've been going through and trying to finalize some of these land development projects. They had not made any requests for release on these funds. Uh, we did an inspection of the site and, uh, we recommended, uh, the, the reduction. I just added that, uh, last sentence in based upon discussions with Cindy Alexander, uh, just to make sure that if there's any bills due to township that, uh, before she gives them their money back, that they pay the township first.
All right. Dan, now we know about the, uh, the private improvements, because you just mentioned some of the private improvements that make up that kind of money on a private.
Yeah, this would be, this would be paving, grading, drainage, stormwater management, erosion and sedimentation control. Everything it takes to develop a site except the building.
Okay, all right. Is there a motion to approve that payment?
So moved.
It's been moved.
Second.
And seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. The motion carries. For number twenty-seven dash twenty twenty five, consider the award of the bid of Stranisia Escavating in the amount of fifty-six thousand dollars for the, uh, twenty-two Mulwenny Road disposal and cleanup project.
Yeah, we, we hustled to get this project back out the bid after you guys were successful in getting the grants, uh, to clean up the site. Uh, so with the number that we had, uh, asked for from the Stranisha to give us guidance on how much money to request for the grant, uh, they came back through and honored their price and gave us a bid of fifty-six thousand. We had two other bids, one at fifty-nine and one at, uh, one sixteen. So, uh, my recommendation is to award, uh, the contract to, uh, uh, Stranisha for the, uh, uh, completion of the cleanup at twenty-two Mulwenny Road.
Cindy, was the award based on that estimate?
It was actually ten thousand dollars higher, wasn't it? So it was two grants. It was one twenty-five thousand dollar grant from the D E P and a second grant that made up the difference, but it was based.
Thirty-one, I thought.
Yeah, something like that. But it was based on the estimate from Stranisha.
Forty-one I heard about, so that, that covers it all then, right?
Yeah, we had twenty-five, well, we had it and then I messed it up and then got it back again, but yeah, so we have it again.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve this, awarding this bid?
So moved.
It's been moved.
Second.
And seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries. For item twenty-eight dash twenty twenty five, to consider application for payment number twenty and final for the work completed to date for the public works facility building, electrical in the amount of eighty-two thousand eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars and fifty-four cents to S E Schultz Electric, contingent on received and required maintenance bond.
This is the closeout of this contract. Uh, all their punch list items have been addressed and, uh, it's in order for payment. Uh, they have ordered the bonds. I just told them to put it on with that contingency. I didn't wanna hold their money for an extra month if the bonds came, you know, if they came through and got their maintenance bond.
So it's a conditional approval, so. Okay, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second? I'll second that. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. The motion carries. Uh, we're on twenty-nine, right? Item number twenty-nine dash twenty twenty five, it's consider the award of our, our salt shed lighting, uh, proposal to this S E Schultz Electric Company in amount of thirteen thousand two hundred and sixty-five dollars.
So moved.
It, it's been moved and seconded. But I'd remind you that we've got a grant, uh, for the, the, the building itself, but, uh, there wasn't that lighting included and we needed, our guys work sometimes round the clock.
I think just for the record, Tom, I believe Public Works secured three quotes for this and this four quotes and there was, this was a low quote.
I mean, we literally got a salt storage shed that's like over six hundred thousand dollars for thirteen thousand dollars, so go us. Go team.
All right, is there a motion?
So moved.
It's been moved. It's, I'll second that. Those in favor, um, indicate by saying aye.
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 The motion carries. For, for our thirty dash twenty twenty five, consider setting a hearing date for the repeal of our cluster development housing ordinance, uh, out of our unified development ordinance. Is there a motion to? Or do we get, we need a.
Do you wanna just do it's, does it, will it take long? Could we just do, so could we do like six-thirty before?
Yes.
Well, you need thirty days, um, so we can't do it at the February meeting because we need thirty days to get it over.
So we'll do it at six-thirty at March.
March third. Okay, that works.
Okay, well, it's, we have a motion to fill that date.
Make a motion.
It's been moved.
I'll second.
Second, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries. For our item thirty-one dash twenty twenty five, it's to consider promotion of a part-time firefighter, Maxwell Ted Cash Dollar to full-time firefighter at an hourly rate of twenty-eight dollars. I know it says, uh, twenty-six something in the, uh, what you might have been passed out, but the rate we're approving is twenty-eight dollars. Is there a motion to approve? It's been moved and seconded. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, the motion carries. Uh, for number thirty-two dash twenty twenty five, it's to consider adopting a revised schedule for the township fees and permits. I mean, we've circulated it for a while. We, I think our board feels that's bringing it up to date and, uh, covering all our costs. So is there a motion to approve that revised schedule?
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded, and I'll second that. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries. We will have that posted too. Um, it's rather lengthy. It's like three pages of different kind of permits that we're required to either require, or make property owners get. Uh, before I go on to these general things, I just wanna finish our, um, professional reports. I think I finished with, um, can you find it?
You just did the police one.
Um, I think, so, okay, uh, Jack, anything on the building and zoning? Okay, thank you. Um, Joe, I know you're new here, but, uh, I guess we should be introduced too to, uh, everyone here.
Joe Hurson, Public Works. The department responded to several weather-related issues over the last few, uh, weeks. There was a high wind event where we responded with the police and fire departments to nine locations, the trees and wires down. Also, the department had several, several early morning starts related to snow and icing conditions. And currently, the township has two thousand tons of road salt on hand and another five hundred tons onward.
And you'll find out Joe's a man of few words. You'll get to know that like we did. Uh, Dan, our engineers report, anything else?
Yeah, the, the board has a copy of my December thirtieth report. Just a comment that we are trying to clean up some of these land. that we are trying to clean up some of these land development projects that have been hanging out for a while, working with Liz Ross on that. And then on development activity, the only thing really new to report is that they appear to be ready to start the next phase of, uh, of the, uh, Traditions of America Development. Uh, that's phases six and seven, which are the final two phases. That's all I really have to report on.
All right, Dan, thank you. Gretchen, solicitors report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the board has my official, uh, report with everything that's going on in the township. Um, of note, I will mention that we just closed out an O O R appeal. We closed out the record of no O R appeal. This was the Range right to no request, so we are awaiting a decision on that. Uh, we have, currently have a substantive validity challenge to the oil and gas ordinance as well as a procedural validity challenge that were filed, which we will deal with. Um, we have one land use appeal that's been appealed to Commonwealth Court by the applicant that had to do with a setback variance issue. Um, and that's it for major litigation.
Can we clarify for the public note? So Mark West filed a procedural validity challenge saying that we didn't follow all the procedural steps in establishing the ordinance. Obviously, we strongly disagree with that. We're gonna defend that in court. But on top of that, Range Resources filed a validity challenge that will be heard January twentieth in front of our zoning hearing board. Um, and their argument is that, um, the twenty-five hundred foot setback, um, is exclusionary. So we will also need to defend that in front of the zoning hearing board, just so you understand.
Thank you for that. Um, Ted, Fire Department report?
Yeah, right before Christmas, we met with the D C D technical consultant. Uh, we had a meeting. I thought the meeting went very well with him. Uh, they reviewed our bylaws, said there was some recommendations in there. Uh, we're working with the steering committee right now to fix those recommendations. We're also, uh, working on developing more policies for the fire department and the three companies will be following those policies. Uh, we're looking to get some more meetings set up with the D C D here in the near future and keep moving towards the merger. He also said the merger's probably gonna take about two to three years to fully complete because it's a slow process and with all the parts that move with it, uh, it just takes that much time to complete everything.
All right. Anything else, Ted?
That's it.
All right, thank you, Ted. Uh, Dan, any, any report?
Just that I'll have a year-end or annual summary for twenty-two, for that meeting. So we'll give you some, on details.
All right, thank you, Dan. Um, we did the resolutions, um, for the item number thirty-three dash twenty-two-five, it's to consider the Board of Supervisors meeting minutes from Monday, December second at the public hearing.
So moved.
It's been moved.
Second.
And seconded. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Uh, for item number thirty-four dash twenty-two-five, consider the Board of Supervisors minutes for the Monday, December second, uh, regularly monthly meeting.
So moved.
It's been moved. Yeah, I'll second that. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Do I hear some more ayes?
Huh?
Do I hear some more ayes?
Yeah, I'm sorry. We're chuckling down here because he keeps seconding it and you're not hearing him.
Oh, sorry. Uh, for item number thirty-five dash twenty-two-five, it's consider the Board of Supervisors minutes from the Monday, December third special meeting.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded.
He seconded.
I heard. I'm attuned now. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries. For item number thirty-six dash twenty-two-five, it's consider the Board of Supervisors minutes from the Monday, December thirtieth special meeting where we adopted our final, uh, twenty-two-five budget with no tax increase.
So moved.
It's been moved.
Second.
And seconded. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Uh, for item number thirty-seven dash twenty-two-five, it's to consider the general fund invoices from December first through December thirty, December thirteenth, twenty-thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four.
So moved.
It's been moved.
Second.
And seconded. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 The motion carries. So this time we will take comments from our residents on any just general, thing of general interest or questions. Please come up to the microphone too, please.
AC, Roland fifty-two Sycamore Street. So I want to address some concerns in regarding with the functionality of our website page. Uh, the, it just seems like everything's buried. We, we've had people, including myself, go on there for the Act fourteen, have not received one notice. There's been no updates. You go to our job posting board, there's jobs on there from twenty, uh, twenty-two and, and beyond. I mean, that stuff needs to get archived. And it's, it's, it's like, we need a, a clearer way for us as citizens to use our township website. It isn't just about keeping things tidy. It's about accountability and transparency. Um, like keep job postings up for a month, post when they get filled, who filled them, and then put them into an archive section. But there's like seven pages. Because I was looking to see who you guys were putting up for your, you, what you guys just did when you pushed through. And it's almost impossible to find one job was posted. Um, there's, um, it's like, I, I know Jack is put in charge of everything and it's like he's on another board too. Again, this is a situation where maybe his, there's too much on his plate. Because you have things that I've seen you guys and we've got on record saying, go put on to the Facebook page, and we don't see it. And then when you call or you ask, it's either you're shut down or it's like, it's in there and that's it. You know, it needs to be more user-friendly. The agendas are another problem that I'm having. It's like, half the time when we get them, we get the draft of them and there's no names. It's just blanks. It's a bunch of blanks. How can we as a community, as citizens, give a counterargument or support or, or, uh, uh, disapprove of something's, some group, some person, some, some entity that you guys are pushing when the only information we're given twenty-four hours if at best before we show up here is a blank line. It's like, you know, you all knew Darlene Barti's husband was on that list for the last meeting. None of us knew. Only you guys knew. That's, that's not good.
Say, can I just hit her up one second? You can finish after, but I wanted to tell you whenever we have personnel issues until it actually gets approved, we're not going to put a name on, on the public and find out that person doesn't get to vote. I mean, it's kind of embarrassing if we put your name on here to, to, on a position and you get voted down. We, we've never-
Why is that embarrassing? That's called governance.
We've never done it before and we won't put somebody's name out until we actually have a motion for it. And plus, wait a minute. Plus, these kind of positions, they're administrative functions. We don't need your input to tell us how, how, you know, person we should appoint or why we shouldn't appoint a certain. We, we have responsibilities of, you know, M P C to do certain things like name all these positions and fill them, and that's an administrative function.
Yeah, but isn't part of that filling it, filling it with us, the taxpayers and voters? Uh, isn't, shouldn't we have an opportunity to apply and put in resumes for those jobs?
The answer's no. You asked the question, the answer's no. You're not gonna have input on administrative appointments like that. Just accept it.
So, no, we don't gonna just, so how is it that we as citizens can't apply for these positions in our local government? Only you, Tom, get to decide, or Jack gets to decide, or Don gets to decide which resumes are put in and who goes through? How is that fair and how is that legal?
You're gonna see, one item we talk about later after you're done is that we're, there's some positions open. There's three positions open on the planning commission, one on the second alternate for the zoning hearing board, and-
Three parks and rec-
Three parks and rec, right, and one on the planning commission. So, I mean, you're gonna hear that. We're gonna ask on, put it on the website.
Perfect. I'm glad to hear that, Tom. But at the end of the day, up until now, it seems that it's, it's just, uh, missing. And it, it, it's sad. And, and, and I feel like for you to tell us as voters and taxpayers that we cannot apply for these jobs because, well, you're saying we have, how are we gonna apply for jobs if you don't post that they're available?
I, I just said we're gonna be posting four positions.
We're gonna, we're gonna. What about what you just did? Why weren't you gonna prior to this when you already knew the positions were up?
AC, we didn't, there weren't open posi-
I looked. Cindy, that's not true. I looked. I looked for two days and there was only one of those positions.
AC, I sat and listened to you. Can you listen to me for a minute?
I'm listening, but it's just, you're not being honest.
Yeah, that's, yeah. No, I want to say something.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I want to say something. It's not disingenuous. There are people who have been serving on boards who, who've done a good job for a long time and who've asked to be reappointed. I agree with Supervisor Cassiola. The people that were appointed tonight were the people that have been serving on the boards that asked to be reappointed. The open positions that we will post will be positions that are open to the public to apply to. And AC, you're not factually accurate because I just looked it up. There's no jobs that have been open since twenty-twenty. I'm not here to argue with you. Could the website, could the website?
You go to the jobs and they help you.
AC, I listened to you. Can you listen to me? There are, there are always things that can be improved. So I will take an opportunity, if Jack, you are willing to let me, and we can sit down and we can try to figure out how to make it better. But to sit up here and scream at us and to say that we're not trying or that we don't listen isn't fair and isn't right. Because that's not true.
Okay, well, I'm sorry. We took it that way, but it's a business.
You called me, you called me a liar and I'm done.
I think you're a liar just that that's not true because those jobs are still on there.
They're not. I just looked.
Darling and her husband.
Michelle, do you want to come up?
We're, we're not gonna, you, you might not accept it, but you're not gonna agree with us. The, the, we're the ones that when we get applications, we're gonna decide on administrative positions. We don't need you to comment on somebody's name that came to us. Go ahead. The name is the availability.
We'll see you in the poster.
Well, I feel like with the new monitor, I have to, here we go. It's probably better. Can't see you guys. Um, I know.
We'll start calling you Polly Pocket.
Sorry. Um, Michelle Stonewark, forty, north of Polly. First of all, congratulations, Carol. You're literally one of my favorite people on the planet, so you deserve everything that you got here tonight. I just love you. Um, I have been emailing the board. I don't know that I've been emailing all of you, but definitely Tom and Frank and Jack and Don about, um, what's been happening up at the Augustine pad. Um, they're definitely doing something and there's definitely activity happening and it's causing a lot of vibrations in our house again. Not as bad as when, you know, you guys were in my house. Um, but it, we feel it more at night, like especially when we're laying down, you know, when we're walking around and, you know, busying ourselves throughout the day, it's not as bad. But like when we're laying down at night, it's almost like every three hours. And I've addressed this concern with Jack on multiple occasions and he's not getting any response back from Range. The last response that I got from you, and I apologize if you haven't one since then, but, um, that they said they'd remedied, on December twenty-eighth, they remedied the concern. And it was still happening to me last night. You know, so-
Jack, what are they, Jack, what are they telling you is going on up there?
But, but, um, real quick, sorry, one more thing.
Sorry, I asked him.
No, no, it's okay. The other update, like they send the, the schedule and update and there's nothing on it. The, the one, the schedule that they send to the township, there's nothing on it. So I just would like somebody to look into it more. Here goes.
Jack, tell us what you-
Sure. Um, um, Michelle and I did go back and forth, uh, last week on a few, you know, the responses are brief, uh, and they're vague. Uh, the latest response, which was today, that I did not get to you and I apologize, was simply, um, everything is functioning as, uh, normal, is, is their answer. So, um, you know, in, in talking with, uh, Michelle, the vibration isn't as bad as it was, but it's still there and I'm still trying to find out what it is. I'm not getting a lot of clarity from them.
So Jack, the other day I was looking, um, on the D E P violation website and there was a report, which I actually have.
Can you talk to me about this one?
Yeah, sorry. Um, the, let me pull it up. Sorry, my computer's having technical, so I have to look on my phone. But, um, they had responded to you at one point that it was for production or to pull the plugs, correct, out of the, to pull the plugs to get the well into production? Is that what they had told you or no? Yeah.
That was several months ago, yeah.
Okay. Um, hold on one second. Let me pull it. Bear with me one second. Um, on, because of that cracked casing from back in August, according to the D E P, it says the department conducted a follow-up inspection of Range Resources Augustine six H well on twelve-ten. The rig is currently washing through existing five-and-a-half casing collar at two hundred and sixty-two feet in preparation for installing a new five-and-a-half casing. Prior to today, they set a composite BP, I don't know what that means, at two hundred and ten and pumped three-point-two, um, pounds of cement on top of and squeezed cement through the wash out, holding pressure for eighteen hours. So it sounds to me, and I can, I'll forward you this so that you have it, and Gretchen, so that you have it as well. But it sounds to me that the reason, there, it goes on to explain that the reason the rig's there is to fix that broken casing. Um, does that make sense?
That's, that's the most information I've heard.
I just found it. I can send you the link. I found it and I'll send it to you, Michelle, too. I just found the D E P has a violations, um, page. I was bored on a conference call, so I was like searching through. And there's a number of, um, there's a number of links specifically for that Augustine six H, and there's a number of pictures too, um, if you want to kind of scroll through and look.
So you think that, that, that's what they're doing up there?
That's what the D E P, I mean, I don't know why the D E P will put that in our report, but it specifically says that's what the rig is up there for.
Okay, well, do they give any kind of, because for me, it's like, and I, I said this in my emails to you guys, like it's, it's almost, it gets really bad like every three hours, almost on the button every three hours. And I get woken up every single time, every three hours, which is like a, like a, yeah, like some kind of vibration that happens, you know, and it's my, my room and my kid's room that, that feel it the most because we're in the back of the house. So like, it, but it's like a legitimate every three hours. So I don't know if they, there's something that they do every three hours. I mean, but it's clear, like I've, I've been keeping track and it is, like I wake up, if it's, if it's midnight, I'm waking up at three and then six. And if it's one, I'm waking up at four and then seven. Like it's-
Gretchen, is it worth reaching out to the D E P and seeing if we can get a more direct answer from them? To be frank, last time I reached out to Range specifically about this issue, I got a snarky response that it's not my concern, it's for the D E P, which is why I started looking for that. Yeah. Um, and so maybe if we go directly to the D E P, like then we'll have an understanding not only of what's going on, but how long it's gonna take.
Well, that's what, that's what my question is. Like I just want to know, is this what it's gonna be forever now? I need, I, I need to know. Like are they, is this, whatever they're doing gonna go on for another couple of weeks? Is whatever they're doing gonna go on for another couple of months? Or is it gonna go on forever? Because those are three very different things for me.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know. I think Jack's done a great job of trying to get an answer from them. I-
Look, me and, we're like best friends now. We've been, we've been talking all the time.
So I feel like at this point, it's just, we have to take it maybe above them and see if we can get an answer.
Yeah, I would appreciate it. And I wasn't even planning on talking tonight, but I just happened to see the post today on Facebook about the update on the Cecil Township Facebook page. And it reminded me when AC brought up the page and I'm like, yeah, it's crap because it says they're not doing anything, but they are.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you, Michelle.
Would it be okay if I pulled up the, uh, Act fourteen?
Yeah.
You want to discuss it?
Well, just to show, show that it's there.
Okay, go ahead.
The process that everybody can follow. There's actually two, two processes here, Tom. Um, first off, I can send it out, but people can sign up and have it sent to them directly. There's, uh, an opportunity for them to add their comments, uh, to whatever, you know, the D E P sends. And instead of having people send it to me, me accumulate it, send it, uh, out to the D E P, they can send it directly to the D E P if they sign up and get the direct, uh, link. And I just want to take a minute and show people where that is.
Good, go ahead.
And, and the reason why Jack's pulling it up, the reason why there are no postings, uh, relative to Act fourteen notices, is the township has not received any. So you won't find any if we don't receive them, so.
Okay, so, um, here we are. Here's the main page. Is the, uh, just so you know, accounting hauling is delayed by a day due to weather. Um, under residence, Act fourteen of twenty-twenty-two, reporting. Click on that. Let me get rid of that. Here, here's everything you need to know. Um, if it's an emergency, dial the eight-hundred number. Uh, pending permits, here's the link, takes you right to, uh, any pending permits, which I believe Supervisor Fisher referred to. Uh, types of submissions tells you a little bit about it. Here's the process where you can sign up, uh, for yourself and get them, uh, those notifications sent to you directly. So really, you know, it, they're gonna come to us and Don and I have worked out that, uh, procedure already, but they can also be sent directly to them via email to individuals who sign up. Currently, there's five people that are signed up and, um, you know, that, that would cut out the middle, me being the middle person on it.
Well, I think that's our point too, that we're not gonna, uh, we're not inclined to burden you with having to be a middleman. If, if it's available, if somebody wants them, here's how they could request them and it'd go directly to them and you won't- and it'd go directly to them and you won't be a middleman because I know we, you have enough duties without being a middleman for these, since there is another.
I get them directly from the DEP's website and keep in mind, they're not, it's not something that's sent daily or weekly. Sometimes there's a couple and then sometimes it's like months later before another one comes. So it's not something you're going to get all the time.
Thank you, Jack. Hey, there, we have no old business, but I did want to bring up something on new business and it's for us in the public here to, just to discuss the disposition of the old Public Works building, once the Public Works has completely moved out. And uh, in, in looking into that, um, we found out that it, it, we can either repurpose the building or we can tear it down. And I think I, in, in talking to the police chief and the fire chief and even Dan from Southbridge, they had some ideas that they wanted to, mentioned to us that how if it could be repurposed, um, they're going to talk about it in a minute. But we also talked about that the building needs floodproofed. And uh, would you please pass these out, out to everybody all the way down there? I just want to go to this report from, here's one more, Dawn. Gate, we had looked into this for us about floodproofing the building and um, um, what, what, what the architect came up with, that we could install, install buttress wall around that whole building. I mean, it, it flooded last time. We got 11 inches of water in it. And um, uh, obviously we're not going to repurpose a building if it's going to be subject to flooding every once in a while. So um, we talked about, there's a couple bullet points. What he mentioned that we could do to it is to install either uh, concrete block or a cast wall approximately 30 inches high around the perimeter of the building. That's the entire perimeter. All the garage doors would be eliminated because you can't really floodproof with it if you have a operating garage door. Uh, he said we would raise all the existing man doors and install concrete stairs up to them on the inside landing and back down. Uh, when you're going to hear from our, our professionals that they don't really need vehicles in there. They want to be, they, they, they're going to talk about getting personnel in there. So we'd have access for them to get in. We'd install back preventers on our existing drain lines and then just install some pump system in a low point. And it's nothing major. I mean, they can pump New Orleans, it's below sea level, they can pump that. We can pump our, our building down there if any water leaks through that, that uh, buttress wall. But he, he gave us an estimate by talking to some uh, or looking on, what, what's that book that he looks at for?
He, he looked at, he, he checked it on means and then he also talked to a general contractor.
And he estimated between 85 and 95,000 to floodproof that building. Now we have a, uh, what's the size of that building, Dan? Had the size here. Well, just hold on one second. I have it right here. The building's 11,000 square feet. So right now it's kind of worthless if it floods. And um, an 11,000 square foot, that's a pretty large facility for our, our emergency providers to work in. So to spend some money on it, um, you know, we got to consider whether, that it's worth it. It's uh, there's 8,000 square feet of like open garage area and 3,000 square feet of uh, type typical office area. So right now I'd like to ask Sean, first of all, just to, if, if we would repurpose this, what, what benefit would be to your police department and even our, some of our neighbors?
Absolutely. And thank you for considering this. I, I think it's a wonderful idea. We do a lot of in-house training now to prevent a lot of costs uh, that are actually having us travel and uh, having us travel and go distances to be able to train our officers, which require traveling time and overtime. Um, this facility with the fire department and I'd even reach out to Dan, um, this could be a training center for our officers to get us, get them out of the elements. Uh, we do a lot of training at the Fire Academy over in Short Tier Township at this time and it could be a 90-degree day. It's, it's hard on our guys as well as we do train in the cold weather too. This gives us the opportunity to do less lethal uh, training, which is TASER. It could be uh, defensive tactics. Right now we have a mat and there are laws that require us to do handcuffing training every year through the state. And we have mats that were in a garage now and it's not heated very well and it's very narrow. So you know, we, we have to be very careful on the mats and not hit a wall or a garage door. So as you said, 8,000 square foot of garage, I mean, that gives us an opportunity to get more mats and it gives us the ability to do um, uh, entries on, on situations where clearing rooms, for example. Uh, we do at, at the Fire Academy, uh, we train at the, the burn house, which is very dirty and he could tell you it's, it's dangerous too, even whenever there's um, not smoke in there. So we can put up different walls and different scenarios to have the officers do clearing the rooms. Um, we usually use SIMs with that. It's like, almost like a close thing to a BB gun, I guess you can say. And it has a pellet and it leaves a, a paint mark on uh, the officer where the bullet hit. So we do live scenarios with that training. Um, and all around, again, you know, just having a classroom or a size area to have and accommodate many officers, uh, that would be wonderful. Um, I just think you guys have any opportunity, Ted and I did have a meeting today and talk a little bit about it and we're excited to see what you guys are able to offer to us if it's even possible. Um, we will, you know, would appreciate it and we definitely use it during shifts. We would have a scheduling system we talked about. Right now at the Fire Academy, there's a schedule that they could go on and see who's using it. Uh, he does a lot of training in the evenings. We typically do them in the during the daytime uh, and schedule around the officer's schedule. So we'd be happy to, you know, work with each other to make sure we can use it early.
Tom, can I ask a quick question? What's the timing on this? Like when would we, so can I start looking? Can I?
Something like that, but um, the idea, we just got to commit to say, do, do we want to repurpose this building or tear it down? And we're just trying to find out the, the sentiment of the board and even the input from the public. But Ted, your uses that you could have?
Yeah, so uh, our uses could go anything from our recruitment all the way to building up new volunteer firefighters as they come into the fire department. Uh, you see a lot of the surrounding municipalities doing a citizens' fire academy where they ask residents to come in for four or five days. They spend a few hours in the fire department. The fire department teaches them about the fire department and then it kind of entices them to join on fully and then they go through their basic training from there. Uh, that would be a good recruitment tool to bring new volunteers in. We could take them to this location and do all that training there for them. Um, we could also utilize a lot of the things that the police department want to set up for everything that we need. Um, and the other problem we run into is, is the travel times and the distance of the other training locations. Putting that location right here in the township, I can now have all my firefighters in the township. I can assign a few guys that if a call comes in, they can go respond to that call, but everybody's there getting the same training. We're not restricting five or six guys that have to stay back in the township to go outside of the township to train somewhere else.
Thanks, Ted. Dan?
Yeah, for us, we really have no uh, good facility for all of our employees to have training. Um, so it would be fantastic to have like an auditorium and a work area where when we have new equipment that we need to educate the staff on or, you know, just general staff needs that we're, we have an area that we could go and, you know, obviously scheduling with the rest of the responders uh, to make that work. But you know, it would be a fantastic location. Um, we could send, you know, response out from that with delay and um, that would be a comfortable setting to get more people in one location to do the training that we need.
I might mention also that a lot of people weren't happy with it, but we spent almost seven, around $7 million on a 39,000 square foot building. This is a third that size and it might be a couple hundred thousand to uh, renovate it to outside, almost a hundred thousand to floodproof it and whatever they needed inside. And according to Sean and Ted, in my talks with them, they might just want some temporary or some wood stud walls built in that 11,000 square foot open areas so they can have hallways and uh, clear rooms and things like that. So it's not, they, they also, they, in the building and they're all familiar with it, they said they don't really need a lot inside. It's just a, you know, it's, they could fix that place up and uh, um, so that, that's what we have to consider, you know? I just want to know if the board does an interest in following up and see, getting some prices and trying to get a grant for it. I think with, with the fire, EMS fire and police uh, on our side with applying for a grant like an LSA or sending those more places.
I was actually just looking. There's a bunch. There's a lot of opportunity, especially if we're not on a, like a specific time limit. There's a lot of opportunity.
We ask for a lot of grants for sewers and things like that and those aren't very um, um, popular things. You know, but this is something that I, I think most grant awarders would really like to hear that it's a place to train EMS people.
Especially because it's across, it's police, fire and EMS, so it's across all emergency services.
So if that's okay with the board, we'd like to proceed with the, just the um.
Can I ask a quick question before I start looking for grants? So are we wanting, I mean, it's very hard to get 100% of coverage, but like are we willing to invest some money and have a matching grant?
Well, that, that's a question for the board again, um.
I know, that's why I'm asking.
I would like to see a cost analysis of interior repairs to put this building together. I know there's grant monies available, but I would also like to see what it's going to cost. I mean, I understand the uh, you know, the water flood project outside, but what are we talking about? I don't think that building's in the best of shape. So I need to see some numbers or something, how much money we're going to invest in this if it's worthwhile.
That's kind of what I'm asking.
Well, that's why we got to talk to our architect. But again, it's uh, we're not going to engage an architect if the board just wants it torn down. If, if it's worth investigating further, we have to spend a little bit of money on the professionals to uh, to, to get prices like Frank just asked for. So they, they, they're not cheap to get prices. So if we're going to work towards it, we can always stop anytime. If we see this getting out of hand, you can say, just it's not worth it, tear the building down.
Yeah, I think it's worth looking into. I mean, just understanding.
Bill, I want to know what your, your opinion and I heard what Frank said. Darlene, can you still hear us?
Yes, I'm still here. I'm listening.
Well, I'm asking you.
I can hear everything that's being said, but I'm, I'm getting, I'm getting the gist of it as far as the old municipal building. So I got to agree with Frank. We need to get a cost analysis, but if we can make it work, see what happens.
Okay. All right. Anybody else have any comments on that? I mean, a lot of times it's worth hearing opinions outside also, but that, that's kind of a plan, repurpose it or tear it down? A, a, any mold can be uh, uh, taken out, but also when there's mold, it's not always black mold. A lot of people hear mold, they assume it's black mold. There's a lot of bread mold from floods and it's, it doesn't turn into black mold. Um, I, Bill, did we, the, the insurance company that worked with us last time, did we do anything uh, other than replacing equipment with that money? Do you know?
No, we didn't do anything.
Do we get, have anything else?
There's uh, in the garage, there's a wall that has the, it's questionable structure. It's uh, it's separated from the pile last. It has the, it's still inward towards the garage itself. It's got a glass block windows, the glass block window is all cracked, you know, so there's obviously an issue more all with that wall right there. At the top of the pile last, the, the wall has separated from the pile last with a gap of about an inch or so. We've, we've known about that and there's some cracks in the back of like the garage doors back there. I'm not sure if we're able to that wall also.
Our engineers can tell us whether it's fixable or not and, and you know, what's kind of it costs. But, but wait, wait, but the question for Dawn. Dawn, um, you said we spend a lot of the insurance money on repair, replacing equipment. What about any for the remediation and things like that? Is there money left in that?
No, I guess, I mean, I guess I'm a two-tiered question. Yes, there is.
There, yes, there is money available. Uh, no, we have not utilized it for any internal repairs uh, to that building.
Yeah, we weren't going to do it if we're going to tear it down. We're not going to fix it up and then tear it down. So that's why, that's why I'm kind of pushing the issue now. We have to decide, I mean, at least uh, start the process and then if, if, if it starts looking too expensive, then we drop it. But we're not going to spend that insurance money that we got for, uh, and then end up tearing it down. So I, I think we got to kind of guide. Did anybody want to say anything before we close the meeting?
It sounds like a great idea and it'd benefit our township, like universal spot like the, both need to work out. And I'm, I'm, I'm thinking Darlene and Frank are right about that, that we got to look into, you know, and maybe Bill can go down or Joe, our new guy can go down and give us an update at the next meeting and what, what was said or what, you know, how they give us updates, what's going on.
All right. Anybody else have anything else?
I have something I want to say.
Go ahead, Bill.
I just want to stand up and uh, address everybody. I want to thank everybody. I let everybody know that our 20th annual voice propax drive was a huge success this year. Um, I thank everybody in the community for coming out. Uh, we filled another truckload of uh, I'm pretty loud. Um, we filled another uh, truckload of toys up for the kids and we raised $5,000 in cash. Uh, so it was a tremendous success and once again, we thank you. We really appreciate everyone, everyone coming out to support the department, the Board of Supervisors and more importantly, the, the kids of Washington County. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Bill.
Oh, yes. Um, yeah, Dawn, you, you know what positions we were going to put on website? Would you just tell everybody?
As far as uh, boards and commissions, the available seats are as follows. Uh, for Parks and Rec Board, there were three seats available. For the Planning Commission, there is one seat available and the board has talked about having an additional alternate to the Zoning Hearing Board, so that seat is available. So uh, Jack will have the advertisement on our webpage. Um, interested parties are welcome to submit a letter of interest uh, with a resume if they so choose, if they're interested in those positions.
Okay, is there anybody else on the board that has any other thing to bring up? Going once, going twice. There being no further business, this meeting is declared adjourned and thank you.
Are you saying we have a light on this break?
Yeah.
That's awesome. Oh, I love that. Love it. It's going to be my new favorite pen. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks again for help with the flag there, Mr. Ezio. So Legion is closing for this.
I'd interrupt, but as you can see, they're posted right there.
Oh, thank you, Jack. They weren't earlier.
I didn't just, I didn't just throw them up there.
Okay, okay. I looked for them multiple times. It's always been hard to get them on. All right. Granted. Yeah, that's what I thought, but I don't know if they're open.
You know what I mean? I, it's, you know, like it's, it's.
Soon as you get there.
And here's.